Good evening. My name is Art Spru. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. And this is the Town of Chatham Planning Board Hybrid Meeting. This is September 8, 2025. It's 5:30 PM. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. I don't see anything up yet. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410, conference ID 605-082-5570, or join the meeting online via remote, Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide a real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'll begin with a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
Present.
Warren Shane.
Present.
Bob Werschafter.
Present.
Charlene Greenhall.
Present.
Frank Shear.
Present.
Bob Dewis.
Present.
And Art Spru, I'm present. And I'll ask any board member if they have any reason to recuse themselves on any agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, I do for 104 Crow Road.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's start with the minutes from August 25, 2025. Does any board member, any comments, questions? Yes, Charlene?
Just something very, whoa, minor feedback. On page three, on the motion regarding the comprehensive permit, at the end of the motion, which says, and highlighting the items as presented by the staff report, and that the planning board looks forward to the opportunity to review the project further. I believe I said something along those lines in my motion regarding the comprehensive permit.
Oh, yes, we did. We did. That was the note you made in your letter as well, Mr. Chair.
And I already got in touch with Annie this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Frank?
On the same page, the second paragraph, it says, "The board discussed," period. I'm wondering whether something was left out.
We will look into it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, and then, I couldn't figure it out. On the last page, the fourth page, the first paragraph, the last sentence, a few members noted that allowing tiny houses, I would delete tiny because it's not related just to tiny, it's related to any houses, homes on undersized lots could affect things like approval not required applications, and that it was important to address that piece. And I insert as a priority because the Act makes it not optional, period.
Okay.
Because many other provisions are optional, but this one is not.
All right, so if we need to look back at that second paragraph on page three, should we just defer this to the next meeting then, the minutes, unless there's a reason for the board to do something different?
I have a sneaky feeling it was just supposed to say, "The board discussed the proposal." I think it's just missing a couple words.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Because then it follows with all our, you know, discussion.
Okay. And if it's something different than that, we can always go back and revisit this. Okay. With that, can we have a motion for approval? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
At the bottom of the fourth page, the last, at the bottom of the last page, it says, "Mr. Werschafter added that there was still a lot of work," and the last sentence is also working on a bylaw. It's the coastal resiliency bylaw.
Which is different.
Yes.
Yes, from what we would do.
Very good catch. Thank you. Okay, with no further edits or comments, I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the August 25 meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper.
I approve.
Warren Shane.
Approve.
Bob Werschafter.
Approve.
Charlene Greenhall.
Approve.
Frank Shear.
Approve.
Bob Dewis.
Approve.
And Art Spru, I approve. All right, next item on agenda is public hearing for definitive subdivision 104 Crow Road. Just want to go through the procedures that we'll be doing. First, we'll start with a public notice we read by the clerk, and then a presentation by the applicant. The board will then ask questions and comments. Then we'll, next step is, we'll see public statements in favor of the application. And the Chair will read any correspondence. Next, the public statements opposing the application, any rebuttal, board comments, and then the board hearing will be closed in deliberations. And at the time of the, after the hearing is closed, deliberations, the audience participation is not permitted during the deliberation process. So I'd like to begin with the clerk to read the notice.
Public hearing notice for consideration of definitive subdivision plan. As required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Sections 81L and 81O, the planning board of the Town of Chatham will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 8, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the Chatham Town Hall Annex located at 261 George Rider Road, Chatham, Massachusetts, to consider the application of Application 25-16, 104 Crow Road Nominee Trust for the Chatham Max Holdings LLC, for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled Lotting Plan for Definitive Plan of Land in Chatham, Massachusetts, owned by Chatham Max Holdings LLC, and being a subdivision of Lot 6 on Land Court Plan 16959-H, and Lots 8 and 9 on Land Court Plan 263300D, and Lot 13 on Land Court Plan 26330G, plan prepared by Bracken Engineering Inc., dated June 30, 2025, and showing three proposed lots. A copy of the plan and application may be reviewed at the Community Development Department located at 261 George Rider Road on weekdays, Monday through Thursday, between the hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and between 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM on Friday. Any person who's interested or wishes to be heard on proposed definitive subdivision plan should appear on the date, time and place designated for the hearing. Frank Shear, a clerk at Cape Cod Chronicle. The print date was August 21 and August 28, 2025.
Okay, do I have someone from the applicant here to present?
I'm, oh, I am here.
Okay.
I don't move as fast as I want to. For the record, my name is Terry Eldridge. I'm a registered land surveyor. Practice, perhaps not in front of this board, but boards that were here in earlier days for about 40 years. I'm representing the Chatham Max Holding LLC. My client is obviously proposing a three-lot subdivision, and the planning board reviewed a preliminary subdivision plan at its meeting in October of last year and moved to accept that plan. I've reviewed the staff report that was done by your town planner, Christine, and she reported that all three lots comply with frontage and area requirements, as well as the mentioned requirement of a circle the diameter of the frontage, which, by the way, is a bylaw that I wrote. She reported that this subdivision is invoking the panhandle option in the bylaws. The definition of lot frontage is defined in the protective bylaw, and the panhandle law requirements are, and she lists what they are, and B, in that, is suitable access by driveway to such a lot as provided within the panhandle. And in the opinion of the board, the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. It has come to my attention that some members of the board believe that if the, if the two lots with frontage on Crow Road access their lots from the panhandle driveway, the driveway should be, meet roadway standards. Planning boards in the past impose the conditions that, in this case, all three lots would access from the panhandle, thereby reducing the number of driveways out to a, in this case, public way. And back then, the driveway pavement was 10 feet wide, which is by no means adequate. So I have a plan that I submitted with the application.
Mr. Eldridge, one of the things I'd like to clarify during your process here presenting is, are you approaching this as an A&R?
No.
No.
No, it's a definitive plan.
As a definitive subdivision. Okay. Okay.
So the topographical plan with conceptual development sketch overlay that I submitted with the application, it depicts a rather wide opening, some 73 feet of opening along Crow Road. And then, as you move back further, it narrows down to 16 feet in width, which used to be the standard for minor subdivisions in Chatham. And Absagami Run is one that's 16 feet wide, which, in my mind, is much too narrow for the number of lots that are in there. But in this case, we're looking at three lots, we'd be accessing it, very little traffic flow. It, the other thing is that with the width, it's approximately 47 feet back from the edge of the pavement, there's ample room in there for somebody to pull up the road, stop, while another car can come in on the other side. It, also, if there happens to be a car coming in, it can stop while another car is coming out of the driveway. And at 46 feet, it's more than enough room, it's almost enough room for two cars. Actually, it is enough room for the two cars because parking spaces are only 20 feet long in this town. So there's ample room there, and also, somebody could pull into a driveway, et cetera, and people can get by. So the, I lost my. On another matter, there was a issue about a lease agreement for the people at 71 Crow Road, and the fact is, there is no lease. There is a document that Ron Rudnick agreed in writing to lease 15 parking spaces, but the lease agreement never got prepared. The, while Ron is interested in helping out his neighbors, he has no authority to execute a lease. He's not on the business entity summary for Chatham Max Holdings, which I submitted a copy of. And there's only two people in that LLC that have the right to sign any document. Ron is not one of them. The attorney for the neighbor, William Riley, will be present for another filing later this afternoon. He can confirm that Ron's only interest was to help out a neighbor, and that a lease does not exist. On another matter, I read, in that, in your report, there was a question of application of intersection site triangles being analyzed, which I have done. And that was a plan that was submitted to you today? Yes, okay. So as you can see, the site triangles are very small. One is about three feet deep by a length of about 18, almost 19 feet. The other one is almost four feet deep with a length of 53 feet. And that, it's those little spots shown in green, and in the upper right-hand corner, it gives dimensions for them and bearings and distances. There's no issue with that. I mean, it's, and then anything within the road is obviously town's responsibility if somebody, unfortunately, this never happens, but people put shrubbery up in the right-of-way, and nobody ever does anything about it. So many places in this town that occurs. And why somebody doesn't do something about it is beyond me. But in this case, the site triangle, which can be referenced in this plan and your statement of conditions, is so minimal that, you know, it's not difficult to adhere to. So if anybody should have any questions, we're happy to address them. And on behalf of my client, thank you for your time and consideration of this project.
Okay, there are some comments, but I'd like to hear from some of the board members first, and I can get back to the comments that were submitted. Catherine, do you want to begin with any comments or questions of the applicant?
Yeah, excuse me. It's been our practice, I mean, the plan that you've submitted shows a driveway that basically has, even though Lot 25 and Lot 23 have frontage on Crow Road, the access to those lots is off the driveway that is in the panhandle, a portion of Lot 24. I think in general, what we would, I believe, we'll see what my colleagues think, but in general, we would require that that is not a driveway, but that it becomes a private way, that it becomes a road with the appropriate road width. And then you could have Lot 25 and Lot 23 having access to that private way, which would be a private way for this subdivision. Alternatively, Lot 25 and 23 should have access to Crow Road from their frontage. And I understand there's some advantage in having only one curb cut there, but that can't be a driveway. That is a driveway for three lots. It would need to be a private way. So that would be my comment, that the revision of that might, of course, change the analysis of the site triangles. Let me just see if I had any other. Yes, I think there's some additional information that we're going to require, but I think I'll ask the Chair to request those.
Well, one of, one of the reasons why I asked you the question about you treating this as an A&R, if this is filed as a subdivision, then we've got to go back to some of our rules and regulations on right-of-way widths and roadway widths. If this is considered a panhandle as a driveway, if it's approached as an A&R, then there's a little bit more flexibility on, because you're looking for a 20-foot-wide access point now. Panhandle is allowed to have that.
If you would like to refile this as an approval not required, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah.
In this town, you can't do a panhandle lot under an A&R.
Oh, that's right. That's right. But we still can actually treat this pretty close to that. I mean, this is essentially what's going on around here.
And if the board would like driveways to come off of Crow Road and just the one single driveway going into that one lot in the back, that's fine with my client.
Well, and that's why I'm sharing this with the board right now. I'm interested in how the board wants to approach this. Do they want to continue as you proposed it, or is there some concerns about them because of the filing that we should have each of the individual two separate lots have access off of Crow Road? Okay, why don't we go down the road and the list? And Warren, do you have any other comments? We'll come back to Catherine's stuff.
Okay, no worries.
Well, to me, my familiarity with the technical aspects of this is such that I don't think I have any, anything to really ask at this point. But I would say that if, in fact, as Catherine points out, that this really looks, smells, and tastes like a private way, not a in-handle, then I would, I would ask that the applicant explain why it's appropriate, necessary, to treat it other than as a private way.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So what I mentioned to you about the entrance, that's really the key point of bottlenecking. Cars are trying to come in, cars are trying to go out, is problematic, and vice versa. And it, so by providing a distance of almost 46 feet in length of space for cars to be side by side, one coming in, one coming out, really, two going out and two coming in would fit in that scenario. And then they'd narrow down to, I guess actually it's one and one, makes more sense. Then the one coming in could go into the driveway and continue on. The one going out could go out, there's no issue. And in the past, the 10-foot's have worked very well in this town, but I never liked them. I always wanted something wider. I always specified 12 feet of pavement, just because 10 is too narrow. But I've always wanted more for the intersections, which I was able to do on this particular plan. And, yeah, I know, you know, 16 feet of width, while it's not near regulations today, there's a lot of roads in Chatham that have been built 16 feet wide, the biggest being Absagami Run. The biggest that I'm aware of is Absagami Run. And I've gone down that road, and there's a UPS truck coming in the other direction, and we pass fine. And at any rate, I just think that that adequately addresses the concern that the board would have relative to access. And as far as cars bottlenecking on the driveway, the guy in the back isn't going to bottleneck with anybody back there. But as he's passing through, if somebody wants to come in, he can either back up into his own spot or pull into another driveway. And by pull up, maybe just swing into it so the other car can get by. It just makes sense, and it eliminates all the driveways out onto Crow Road.
Okay. Bob, do you have questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. I think I actually would prefer when we don't have three driveways.
Right, yeah. Charlene?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my first thought is, or question is, is this properly before us?
Yeah.
This is commercial property.
Right.
It requires a preliminary plan. Preliminary plan that was filed is more than seven months ago.
Yeah.
So there should have been another preliminary. So there should have been another preliminary plan.
Yeah.
That being said, I am not at all comfortable with the layout of this and having the three driveways. I think I know part of the reason why they have this, because from a road, there's a fifty-foot setback requirement.
Correct.
And if they do a forty-foot way, although we only require thirty-three, right?
Yeah.
So I think a different configuration, you could still get three parcels here and still be able to meet the necessary setbacks from the proposed subdivision road. And then one other comment on the plan itself, the lotting plan. Note number four, planning board endorsement does not constitute a determination of conformance under current zoning. I've never seen that on a definitive subdivision plan. They're supposed to meet zoning if they're for building purposes, which I believe that these are. And I have a couple more, but I don't want to belabor it because I'm not quite sure if it's actually lawfully before this board.
Okay, so actually, you have an interesting point there. The way I'm looking at the lotting plan, Lot 23 has a hundred foot of frontage. I think Lot 25 has, is that?
It has a hundred.
If it includes?
It has a hundred. Both lots have a hundred.
Yeah, is it both lots have a hundred, or is that a hundred and twenty-seven?
It'd be a hundred, it'll be a hundred and twenty-seven.
It would be, it would be one twenty-seven, but they do meet the requirements for frontage for 23 and 25.
Correct. So what I was looking at is if, if this was submitted as a full subdivision, the right-of-way going to about thirty-three feet would still make those two buildable lots there on that. But at the same time, we would look at this and say, okay, we need a full constructed road, we need a cul-de-sac or a T-intersection at the rear. That's, that would be the alternative on this, is what you're s-
It would certainly be my preference. I'm not at all comfortable with three driveways off of a panhandle.
Right.
It's kind of circumventing the whole thing. But again, I go back to, is this actually lawfully before us because of the requirement for a preliminary plan for commercial land?
Yeah.
So why don't we determine that first, because that would determine whether we can proceed, isn't that the case?
Interesting point. This was seven months ago, is when it was filed, the preliminary?
The, the board took up the preliminary in October.
Yeah.
So if it was going to come back, it would have had to been May.
May, so it did not. So can, can an applicant actually submit, go right to definitive without a preliminary?
In Mass. General Law, it's my understanding that for commercial land, and this is commercially zoned land.
Okay.
You have to do a preliminary plan first.
Okay.
That's, that's a requirement under the subdivision control law.
All right. That one-
And I don't have the chapter and verse because I didn't have a chance to get it up.
I know what you're talking about, yeah. We've, we've had one like this in the, in the Commercial GB3 district. It does require going before the zoning board of appeals also, because this is a special permit that would be required for residential-
For the use, but I mean, if, you know, the ZBA denied the special permits-
Yeah.
And this was going to be used commercially, then it really wouldn't meet the requirements of having had a preliminary plan done no less than seven months prior to the filing of the definitive.
All right, the alternative then would be to file this as an A and R with three separate lots, no?
No, you can't, because you can't do a panhandle under an A and R.
Oh, you're right. Okay.
So it's either kind of table this until such time, but technically, it's, the horse went before the cart, or the other way around, I always screw that one up, but anyway, I think it was, we're missing a vital step here.
Yeah.
I, I believe.
If I could make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I just think we probably haven't faced this issue before, in my memory, because subdivisions, either they're on residentially zoned land, or, or there hasn't been a time issue.
Yeah.
So, so my thought would be, we need to first decide that or confirm. If that is the case, we actually cannot continue with this proceeding. We've opened a public hearing, we would probably, I'm not quite sure what, how we'd handle that. We need to probably close this public hearing and then reopen it again.
Or we could-
No, we cannot, it, it would require a new filing. I was trying to figure out a way that we could table this, but we really can't-
Yeah.
Because the preliminary discussion is really going to, I think, weigh in on-
On a lot of these points, yeah.
I mean, the smoothest way, and sorry, Terry, would be to, to request a withdrawal without prejudice-
Yeah.
Of this application, in, just in my thought process.
And before that is done, could I have the chapter and verse of that particular statute? Because I don't remember it.
Oh, I do, it's under Mass. General Law, Chapter eighty-one, oh, I can't remember which, L, I think?
It's probably L, is what I'm thinking, yes.
Or it's under the preliminary plan requirements, but it's in there, I remember this distinctively.
Well, I suffer from CRS as well.
Well, at least I remembered the part that you're supposed to do it, not the chapter and verse. Sorry, Terry. I have reached out to Katie. She is listening, but she can't log in at the moment to answer the question, and I can't get out of my meeting thing to look it up for you, so I don't know the answer, to be very honest with you. I think rather than belabor this-
Yeah.
Perhaps it would be prudent to continue this for next meeting.
I, I was thinking the same thing.
So that we can get that answer-
I would like to get this resolved.
And get the chapter and verse to, to Terry. But having worked in communities with much larger commercial areas-
Yeah.
You know, this is sticking in my brain as a requirement.
Okay, is there a reason that we should continue any, with any other discussion than, until we resolve this issue? I mean, there's a lot of steps in here, and I don't know if we want to cut off any of those as part of it.
Mr. Chair, if I could just comment, I mean, there might be some comments we could make that would be helpful to the applicant when he returns with the preliminary plan, but in some sense, then we are performing the analysis of a preliminary plan, which, if we're understanding that this is not lawfully before us, we probably shouldn't do. So probably the best thing to do would be to continue this to the next meeting, continue the public hearing, and then at that point, determine the proper course of action.
Frank, I haven't heard from you, let's, let's at least have your input.
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with everything that was said, particularly Catherine's point on, on the panhandle.
Yeah, okay. Well, then, at this point, shall we ask for a motion to continue this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this to the September twenty-second, is that the next meeting?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, no earlier than, are we meeting at five that evening? Sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Bring it over to me in a second.
No, I think it's, I think it's the twenty-ninth, the next meeting.
Just want to make sure.
Maybe you might be right.
It is the twenty-second. Five PM, I'm hearing Annie say.
Yeah, it is, it's the twenty-ninth, I think.
No, the next planned and voted meeting's the twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yes.
No.
No, it is, is the twenty-ninth. Is it?
It was moved, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, dear. I've scheduled something for Easter.
Because it is a holiday on the twenty-second, so it is the twenty-ninth. Of September?
Rose's Shonda.
Yes. Oh, yes.
So-
Are we going to have a quorum on the twenty-ninth?
Well, I will not be here. I can't attend remotely, and Catherine, I don't think is going to be here.
And Bobby has to step down.
Yes, step down, so the four-
So it would have to be a unanimous vote of the board.
Right, yeah. Maybe the suggestion is, is to postpone it to the next meeting in October. Because I think that would be-
Can I ask something?
Absolutely.
If we find that ruling and send it to Terry-
Yeah.
That, he can, he can withdraw without-
At any time, yeah.
So-
But the, but the board has to vote on it because it's been advertised?
Yeah.
If it hadn't been advertised yet, it's just a matter of plucking it, but the board has to act on the withdrawal.
So we just have a quick withdrawal?
Yeah.
Nothing else.
Right.
I don't, I don't want to postpone the inevitable for five weeks to come by and tell Terry, oh my gosh, you know, none of this is valid. If we, we know that tomorrow-
Well, then I would-
And it's just a matter of formality on the twenty-ninth that we close the hearing.
It might be the only thing on the twenty-ninth, too.
Could I make a comment, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This, hearing all this, it might be a better course of action for the applicant to withdraw without prejudice tonight?
I can't do that.
You can't?
On behalf of my client.
Oh, okay.
I legally have the authority to, but without discussing this with the client, I'd really like to see the chapter and verse that-
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, then, why don't we continue this to the twenty-ninth?
So I move that we can, I amend my original motion to continue this to the twenty-ninth of September, no earlier than five PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Helburn?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Werchafter?
I approve.
Charlene Greenall?
Approve.
Frank Scheer?
Approve.
And Art Spur, I approve. Okay, I think the next item on the agenda, I think the Appicant has asked to be moved, I think the attorney is running late, and would like to have us move up the release of the covenant for Lot 105 and zero Reynolds Circle. So we'll do that next, and then we'll come back to the site plan approval. Okay, and if you could state your name for the, for the record, please?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport. I'm here with Mark Zipo, who is the owner of Lot 105. Excuse me, apologize. This is a very unique situation. Mr. Zipo bought the land a few years ago, and he's in the process of selling it, and through some research that Buyers Council did at Town Files, it was discovered that twenty-three years ago, the then-planning board approved a two-house lot subdivision at the end of Mill Lane on Reynolds Circle, and I don't have something to put up, so I know that what's on the screen is not me, that's the last case. The, that, the board in 2002 imposed a covenant in a statement of conditions, very standard, it's what the boards do, but the then-owners of the property never recorded the covenant and the statement of conditions, and it sort of, I guess, was forgotten, because in 2005, a house was built on Lot 102 in the subdivision. So it was Lot 102, and the, Mr. Zipo's lot was then Lot 103, it's now Lot 105 on the Land Court plan. So there was going to be a house on Lot 102, a house on Lot 105. Owner, Lot 102 was sold twenty-odd years ago, and a house was built, as I said, you know, twenty years ago, with no release of covenant, because I assume no one knew there was a covenant, because it hadn't been recorded at the Land Court. And so life just went on, and then about three weeks ago, or a month ago, this all, you know, was discovered. And so Mr. Zipo would like to sell his lot, the attorney for the buyer said, hey, it's not recorded, but there was a covenant that this board, you know, imposed. And so we're here asking for a release of Lot 105, Mr. Zipo's lot, from the covenant and the statement of conditions. The road, Reynolds Circle, which, and you have it, it was in, Christine attached it on her staff report, Lot 104 is the circle. The circle was made, built, there's a, there's a, oh, okay, and someone sitting next to you knows about that road being built. So it is a paved cul-de-sac with a nice grass circle in it. It's at the end of a gravel dirt road, but it's a very nice subdivision road for the two-lot subdivision. And so we're happy to answer any questions we can, we don't know the history beyond what I just shared with you, because none of us were involved. There it is, on the plan, thank you. So Lot 105 is what we're asking for the release of, and happy to try to answer any questions, but we'd appreciate if you would vote to release the covenant and the conditions.
Bobby, you can start, I do have information myself, too, but go ahead.
All right, I, he happens to be talking to the guy that, that made the circle.
Oh, okay.
Also, I work for the people that, that had the lot, and I, I actually have the plan of the house and the septic system, which I believe, I almost believe the septic was put in before the house was built.
Is this for Lot 102 are you referring to?
No, 105.
That's vacant, Lot 105 is vacant.
I know, I think-
Oh, you mean there was a plan to build the house?
I have the plan, and I, I almost, I almost-
I can tell you it was never built.
No, I know, I know it is. I know it wasn't built, because they were friends of mine.
Yeah.
But I almost think that there might, there might have been the septic put in, because it was going to be put in before the house was built. That's only a guess, because that was the plan to do it, but I do have the plan of the building that was going to go on there.
Mm-hmm.
I, I accept that. I don't have a better response.
So the, just going down the conditions, and the statement of conditions, all lots shall be served by town water measure out there, but it, my observation was, is both of those conditions are evident and, and have been met, so I don't know if that was done. Again, remember, this was approved back in 2002. I was surprised that there wasn't more growth out there, and probably to the point that it could be much narrower than this, but it was, it was a clear corridor, I thought. And I think the other, the other, those are the two primary conditions associated with, with this, so I'm not quite sure that there's any limitation into considering what the Appicant is requesting. Catherine, why don't you comment?
Mr. Chair, as we discussed earlier, I had the question about the covenant, it doesn't, don't covenants run in perpetuity with the land? You assured me that we could release-
Yeah.
The covenant. From my perspective, all of this is a bit hard to track down, and it's a little bit But given the current situation, I, I see no reason why we couldn't release Lot 105 from the statement of conditions and the covenant.
By the way, Reynolds Circle is, is all built, it's paved, it looks good, it's got catch basins at the end of it, it's the best part of the whole section there, Long Mills Road.
Mr. Dubus did a good job.
Yeah. I'll go-
Yeah, I guess my-
Go ahead.
My question is, if, if we release 105, is the covenant still for 102?
Yes.
Okay, but it isn't filed.
Right.
Is there any reason not to just-
Yeah.
Let them both go at the same time here?
Stole my question.
Well, it's, it's an interesting question. I mean, they've, they've certainly built on it without any release. That, I guess, is up to the board to make a decision on that. Warren, do you have any?
I guess those are the kind of things that were sort of percolating around in my mind as to what questions were relevant. I mean, is the covenant that's not filed a really a covenant?
Yeah.
I mean, are we excluding it, but it doesn't exist, so-
Yeah.
And then again, the other lots, you know, does it still exist for them, even though the covenant doesn't exist?
Yeah.
Just because our board did it, and if it's not in the deed, it, in, in some sense-
It is recorded, it is recorded with the Land Court. So it does, it does really exist.
Oh, well, that's news.
We found it recorded? We, we weren't able to find it registered with the Land Court.
Finding a recording? I'm sorry, I take that back then, okay?
It was found- It was found in the planning departments, in a hidden, in a planning department file, in a folder.
But it's not, okay. Okay.
That was the issue. That's why Mr. Zippo and no owners ever knew about it.
Right.
It was never registered with the Land Court.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the only can, the only comment I would have is whatever we do ought to solve a problem that ultimately is-
Or just pass it on to somebody else, yeah.
Isn't before us here.
Right.
And not just create a problem that we know is gonna come back to us. And if there's no way for us to solve that problem from coming forward, then I would ask, um, the, those smarter than I here, how we should proceed.
Well, Charlene, maybe you can enlighten us.
It certainly would be my recommendation, we would release both lots.
Both lots, yes.
It doesn't have to be recorded-
Right.
The release, so it doesn't cost the applicant anything-
Right.
To add the other lot on this.
Right. So we would just be communicating this as part of our record then to the applicant.
It would close out the file nicely.
Yeah, okay. Frank?
No, I, I just have a question, being, being new to the board.
Yep.
Uh, conditions five and six, restriction on number of bedrooms. Is that unusual or? No, it's not?
That was from the Board of Health.
That was from the Board of Health.
Yep.
Probably back in 2002, uh, there was no plan in place to put sewers in. So at least something that was implemented or, uh, passed at town meeting or something like that. So it was all tied to five.
Thank you.
Bob? Oh, you were, any other things to add, Bob?
I, I need two seconds. Could I talk to the owner for a minute? That's the owner right there?
Mr. Zippo is the owner.
I, I, this is, I know this is out of line, but I just need to ask him or tell him something for two seconds. Please.
Is it relevant to the release?
Yeah.
No, it's not. Well, it's relative to what he's doing.
He's selling it.
I think you have to ask, you have to ask the question publicly.
I don't think that's appropriate, Bob. No.
Yeah, you'd have to ask the question publicly.
Can I just say one thing to him then?
Yeah.
Please, call me. Please call me. Okay? Thank you.
All right. With that, could I have a motion on a release?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board release lots 102 and 103, now known as 105, from the statement of conditions and the covenant for the subdivision for Francis J. and Joyce J. Reynolds.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Catherine Helburn?
I agree. I approve.
Warren Chain?
I'm Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Werchafter?
Prove.
Uh, Charlene Greenall?
Prove.
Frank Shear?
Prove.
Uh, Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, prove.
And Artsborough, I approve.
Thank you very much. We, we appreciate your consideration of this.
It's, it's good that we released the nonexistent.
Yeah.
And, and just for the record, it was just nothing the Planning Board did that they shouldn't have done. It was just-
I under-
It got dropped.
We understand, yeah.
Way back then.
Yeah, I think it's usually the responsibility of the applicant to file it. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is, we're gonna go back to a site plan approval for 71 Crowell Road. Good eye. Anyone from the applicant here? Mr. Riley?
Good evening. Bill Riley on behalf of Penn D'Amiello, Mario Marini, who is the operating partner of Penn D'Amiello. The, uh, so Penn D'Amiello wants to add seats outside their building. And we, it's gonna require modification of their liquor license because they wanna serve dinner with alcoholic beverages. And we have a, we need a site plan approval. And of course, we don't have sufficient parking on the property. So the, the current situation is that we are parking on 104 Crowell Road, uh, which was just withdrawn from their subdivision.
It wasn't?
Oh, well, sorry, it was continued. I apologize. So the, uh, and they, so they, they don't have an easement or contract to park there. They just park there with permission. And, um, Mr. Marini is aware of the fact that we're gonna have to be able to provide at some point an additional nine spots for the, how many seats are we putting in?
Forty-nine total.
Forty-nine. So I think the, what I'd like to do is talk about what our, our thoughts are and see, get your reaction. Just on parking. If you have any questions on anything else, we can talk about that first if you want.
Um, Catherine, go ahead.
So we need to, we need to get a little more, I need to get a little more clear picture on the number of seats. I'd like to see, you're, you're saying you wanna have 49 seats total. How many inside? How many outside? Also, how many seats do you have right now? How many inside? How many outside? And you're changing to 49. How many inside? How many outside? And usually in these situations when we have an amended site plan for outside seating, we like to see a seating plan for both inside and outside.
They did provide one, yes.
They did? Okay.
There was a, um-
Only the outside? We wanna see the inside.
No, they, they, they did get the inside, yes.
You all received it from the, I gotten it from the Building Commissioner's office from the last application that was, um, filed for the property before this applicant got there. So that only shows a total of 16, of 16 seats inside. So I don't know if there's more inside at this point. And the occupancy permit, was this in, I didn't get that. So you just, you got it before you, tonight, we found it today?
Tonight, yeah. We just, it was, it was just a fine today.
So then there's three things. If I could just, I believe, and Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, there was the prior approval then, which was, you know, we understand is only 16 interior seats. But we wanna see that. Then we wanna see what you currently have, number of seats inside and outside. And then what you're changing to, number inside and outside with a seating plan.
Forgive me, it's, it's Mario Mariani. May I just ask you, do you have, um, engineered drawing from Architect, uh-
Let's see.
Greg Sarunian?
So the last thing that we found today was from, um, the previous, I think it says 2022 on it?
2022.
And it was an architectural plan?
We, we were, myself and, um, Bill's partner, James Norcross, met with an informal site plan a couple of months ago. And we covered all of this and we presented this to the informal site plan. They made their findings and suggested we do, um-
Wasn't us.
Not you. Here in the, in the town, we met with, uh-
Yeah, I was, I was in the, I was in the meeting.
Yes.
So we just pulled out what was on the online permitting system and what we found available. So I don't know that it's accurate. I don't know what your numbers are in, inside at this point. And then I guess what the board is asking for is just the numbers for outside, the layout.
Right.
And inside. So we can just confirm the calculation?
At that time, we submitted an architect's stamped drawing of the seating plan proposed. And you will have the original one that we were approved for when we opened in June of '24, uh, May of '24. So you-
All of that should have been filed with this amended site plan.
Right.
Because something that happened a couple of months ago with staff isn't part of your application. The, the other thing, if I might-
Yep.
There's no parking table whatsoever on the plan.
Yeah.
So we also need to know how many employees there are on the maximum shift to, you know-
That's correct.
Make sure what the total number of parking spaces- So I, I can confirm to you that they have been before the Historic District Commission with some additional materials that, so they might have received a different package and I think maybe that's where the confusion is coming in. They received a different package from what we received.
There was, there was no parking in that package.
Okay.
This afternoon, we were in front of that group at 1:00 PM today.
The Board of Health or with that group, with the-
Historic Commission.
Historic, okay.
Oh. Yeah, with the Historic Commission. We met, um, via Zoom. And, uh, that wasn't based on parking or anything. That was just based on fence.
Yeah, that-
Right.
Right.
They don't look at parking.
HBDC was concerned about the fence.
Right.
And the, and so I covered that hearing for my partner, James Norcross. And, uh, no parking involved there.
So maybe there were some additional materials from, for the ZBA meeting or something like that that we did not receive?
I'm not aware that there was any zoning matter involved.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking. I don't know if there was or not. I mean, I don't have, I didn't have any architectural plans to pass along to my board.
Yeah.
And they were not part of the-
I'm covering the hearing for my partner and I, I assumed mistakenly-
Yeah.
You know, that there was a, uh, you had a seating plan and you would know the number of seats inside, the number of seats outside.
But we don't.
No.
And we need, we need it as it currently is and as you propose it.
Yeah.
Both.
Yeah.
And so we can see the change. And then we need the parking table. And then we need to evaluate the parking.
And just to be clear, there's no change to the structure, the built, exterior of the building. You're not building out?
No, no, this is just to, to-
Change the, the-
Able to serve alcoholic beverages outside. Right now, I mean, there really is no seating plan for exterior seats. We just have, you know, picnic tables and stuff out there for people that get sandwiches or, or coffee and donuts and things, so. That hasn't changed since, you know, whatever initial approval they received.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll provide a couple of other things of concern that I have. Based on what has occurred in town, which, uh, which is a concern to me with protection of any, um, patrons who come and have outdoor seating. I, I think it's gonna be essential that we protect those, um, customers so they don't have to worry about vehicles driving into them. I'm going to recommend to the board that anytime that we have an outdoor seating requirement, like is proposed here, that bollards are placed at the end of where the parked, parked cars are. So that prevents a vehicle from, uh, for whatever reason, be a possibility of hitting and injuring any of the exterior patrons.
I understand. I think-
It's a, it's a simple, straightforward thing and it's a safety issue in my opinion. And I don't think we wanna see that happen again in this town.
I, I understand, but of course, the town's been here for a couple of hundred years and it's happened once.
And I don't wanna see it happen again.
I don't overboard either.
Yeah. It's a simple thing to do. It's really not that expensive. It's, can be added to whatever you have there. So that's something that I think is gonna be essential anytime anybody wants outside seating. That would be a recommendation. If the board agrees with that, then that would be a condition that we would add.
Yeah, well, we, we have a, a very substantial, um, line of plantings between the parking and where the proposed outdoor seating is, so we'll, we'll take a look at that when we come back with our seating plan.
The other thing is, the original site plan was approved with eight parking spaces. One of the parking spaces, the eighth one, was out in a right-of-way and that's really not a legitimate parking space. The area that was in front of the dumpster was not, uh, listed as parking on the original approval. This is going back to 2002, 2003. Those have since been painted over. I don't believe there was any site plan request interchanging that, that made that from eight to 10. But you're still dealing with, if you want 49 seats total, inside and outside, you're dealing, dealing with a lot more parking than what you have here. So, and I think you understand that 104 is not, is not gonna be available for, for that parking.
The, uh, well, we don't know what the prior owner might have done with the parking spaces. And we weren't, we weren't painting over parking spaces, but the, the, uh, you know, we need nine additional parking spaces and we understand that. And we, right now, we're providing them, uh, down at 104 for, you know, we believe at least a year or so. And we're currently looking for alternate locations where we can, uh, you know, get an easement, whether it's someplace where we do valet parking if it's off-site. Well, it's gonna have to be off-site, so most likely be valet parking. And we're working to secure easements, uh, for that purpose.
I think that you're gonna have to come back with a, a new approach and new information so that we can respond to that.
Well, we're gonna need, yeah, we're gonna need, obviously, we need the plan, so we'll, my suggestion is continue till your next meeting and, and we'll, uh, make sure the plans you receive are appropriate.
Yep. Any other comments that the board members want to make on this? Warren?
I just like, um, like clarity on how many spaces are required.
Right, exactly.
That depends on how many employees you have, as well as how many seats.
Yeah.
If I could, I could address the employee parking.
Yeah.
Employees all park off-site.
Well, we need to know that and where they're parking.
We need to know where they're parking. That I have to look at, so.
We still need a parking table that shows X number of spaces needed for X number of employees. And then if they're off-site, you tell us that, you know, but, and then we would have to waive those parking, formally waive those parking spaces. So, and, so we need it, you know, just clearly spelled out in the parking table, yeah.
Bob?
Yeah, I, I'm a little concerned about the valet parking. We're not only gonna, you can't just say you're gonna have valet parking. I, I wanna see a wait for the cars that they're gonna pull in and they're gonna queue up because, uh, it, there's not a lot of space there. And I guess I'm asking, are you gonna have valet parking in the morning when people come for coffee?
No.
For donuts?
No.
So you're gonna need the same number of spaces that you needed now as a bakery? And, and valet parking isn't gonna solve that.
Well, the, you know, the, the, uh, you know, the coffee shop is a completely different thing than sit-down dinners. And so we've never needed additional parking than what we're currently providing. So we wouldn't be doing valet parking for people stopping for donuts and coffee.
If you're gonna have that many seats, you have to have it all the time, then.
I don't think so. I think that's inappropriate.
It's, you run your business the way you run it. If you tell us-
We have a history of use.
It, the criteria is, is if you have 49 seats, you need so much parking, period. It, it doesn't give you options to say, well, we're gonna have this much parking this time of day, that much parking another time of the day.
I mean, it's a, basically a completely different business.
And, and I think takeout requires a certain number of parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah. And also, if I could just interject, we, obviously, we're gonna be asking for more information. We're gonna be asking you to come back. And we're gonna ask you for a solid plan about the parking. At that time, we can discuss these ins and outs about does, is it adequate? But right now, we're just sort of speculating and I, I don't think it's a good use of time.
Charlene, any comments, questions?
No, I was ready to make a motion.
Okay, well, Bob-
I have a question.
Bob Dubus first.
Is, is the loading zone area considered a parking place?
No, it's supposed to be separate.
That's the same as the delivery area, right?
Yes.
Okay, well, on this plane I'm looking at, they count it as a space. Well, I didn't wanna get that.
May I make one comment, Mr. Chair, before we have a motion? So I just also wanted to comment about the alcohol use. I don't know that, whether that decision is actually within our purview. It's in select board's purview. However, I, I do wanna express a concern that there may be a concern to abutters about increased alcohol use, especially outside, serving to outside. That is a, a departure from what's being done now. And again, I'm not quite sure how that falls under the Planning Board purviews. We do- We do usually, typically, we do deal with hours of operation and concerns of abutters regarding that, so it might fall in our purview in that sense.
Yeah.
We did receive a letter from the town manager's office from, with regard to the licensing of the liquor and the hours of operation and things like that, so that is not something that you will be making a decision of.
I think hours of operation, hours of operation we do often consider, and we do consider concerns of the abutters.
We make recommendations, especially if it's an outside purview like this?
Yeah, I, I understand you make a recommendation, of course.
Okay.
So they, and, and they do as part of the, as part of the process, they're, the, the select board does notify abutters and take all of that into consideration.
Right.
All right, Charlene?
The extension would have to be, go back before the, the select board.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion, Charlene?
I move that we continue this to September 29th, no earlier than 5:00 PM.
Okay, just bear in mind, there's only four members will probably be present at that meeting.
Bob will be here, he just...
Oh, yeah, that's right, that'd be five minutes, right, okay.
Great to have a quarrel.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
We have to vote first.
We have to have a second.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wershafter?
Approve.
Charlene Greenhall?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Approve.
And Art Sprou, I approve. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I don't have any other comments at this point on the long-range planning that was on here. There is correspondence in your packet, it's some good information in there, if you'd like to comment about that.
I, I would like just to say that the letter that you and Christine put together was amazing, it was very well done.
There was a few drafts of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, there was a, there was a peer review that was done on both traffic and stormwater, so those were very good letters too, that were done independent of our board.
And the ZBA did open up that hearing at their meeting yesterday, and they've continued to October 16th, that's the next time that they'll hear this particular item.
Right. And I don't know that we need to comment on anything until after we hear what's, what any, if anything, happens on the 16th of October.
There, there was one point I wanted to make on, on priorities, and I, we did a housing needs assessment plan, which we approved and the Board of Selectmen approved and the state approved.
Yes.
And in that, there are a list of things that we're supposed to do.
Yeah, it's a pretty big document.
And, oh, I know it is, but there's, the number of things that we have to do is not that thick, and I was just wondering whether any of that was considered when we put together the priorities.
I remember reading that, but I did not consider that at the time, but I think you're right, we should go back and look at that and see if there's something that we need to address, and I'll do that with Christine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a comment. I agree with Mr. Shear that the letter that, the preliminary letter that you put together with Christine and sent to the zoning board of appeals is excellent. However, we did agree that the board as a whole would continue to discuss the project on Meeting House Road, and that we would follow up with a summary of the board's comments.
Right.
And there were certain specific comments that you, that we agreed that you would go ahead and draft. I want to dis, I disagree, I think we do need to submit that before their October 16th hearing.
The letter that was sent to them before, for their hearing on the 4th?
No, I know, but I think we need to have another discussion by the board?
Okay.
And make a summary of the board's comments?
Okay.
And send a follow-up letter before their meeting again on October 16th, not after.
Okay.
Weren't we hoping to see revised plans before we commented further?
Well, that was my point in making my suggestion.
You're not going to see them.
Only, you're not going to see them on the 16th, if you're lucky.
You're not going to see them on the 16th, I can just about guarantee that.
If I could jump in here, I, I know zoning wants to have our input as soon as possible.
They do, yes.
Of course they do.
Yeah.
But there's no reason why we can't, it's a long process, and there's no reason why we can't do it later if that appears to be the timing for us, so that's, that's my thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would like to see how they're responding to not just our letters, but also the, the two peer review letters, because it would, if there was any adjustments that are going to be done, it's going to be those three comment letters perhaps would call for modifications of what the applicant has done and their engineer has done.
Yeah, the, the whole issue of access for the, for the, for the neighboring abutter.
That's right.
I mean, I don't see, we, we need to see that.
Yeah, yeah. There is, there are many missing pieces, yes. Okay, I have nothing else, so is there a, a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Catherine Hopper?
I approve.
Warren Chain?
I approve.
Bob Wershafter?
Approve.
Charlene Greenhall?
Approve.
Frank Shear?
Approve.
Bob Dubus?
Approve.
Art Sprou, I approve, and it is 6:42 PM.